Good evening, everyone, and time is seven oh one. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the work session. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please? And for all the citizens who are watching or online, this meeting is being recorded. Vice President Ferguson, are you there?
Yes, Father God, we just give you the glory and your honor. We just thank you continuously for your goodness and your mercy, for your peace, and your mercies that are new forever. And Father God, we just ask that you be in the midst of this meeting, that we will be productive in it. And Father God, we just do everything in your glory, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen.
Amen. Counselor Clark, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Fareed.
Here.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Here.
Councilman Harrison.
Here.
Councilman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President Curtis.
Here.
All are accounted for.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or opposition? Hearing none by unanimous consent, the agenda is hereby adopted. Okay. Um, with this work session, we have, uh, actually, we can get the two budget items for discussion out the way first. Um, legislative budget, Vice President Ferguson.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, when we went over that, our budget, I, um, had all intentions on bringing this up, but I, uh, some kind of way missed it, but the, um, position for the deputy clerk, um, there was no, um, uh, discussion with the councils, as far as I know, or request to take that, that, uh, position out. It's been in there for a few years now, so I'm requesting that, that, uh, position be put back in the budget as it has, as it was last year. It's, uh, I don't know how, I, I was told that it was taken out by, uh, the previous city manager, and no discussion or requests, uh, was made on that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Um, ARPA funds, Councilwoman Herring.
Yeah, uh, I just need to get some clear understanding, uh, from Mr. Stewart, exactly what do we have in dollars to actually spend left in ARPA? What is not committed? Now, I think you told me, but I just need to be sure what it is. See you on.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, um, for that question. Um, after reviewing our expenditures for June, um, we see that the ARPA fund has spent through June, one million, one oh nine, nine, um, sixty. So if we're to look at this now, there was four point three million, four point three, seven, three received, one point one, um, spent, and with our, um, budget as it stands now at two million, eight forty-four, we are left with four hundred and nineteen thousand, three oh three. Um, before I'd said six hundred and, um, eighty-nine thousand was left, but with the, these new expenditures, um, it reduced the amount down to four nineteen, three oh three.
Okay, girls, uh, yeah, I'm looking at some projects that I know I had discussed with, uh, uh, a couple of other fellow council members, Councilman Harrison and Councilwoman Guillaume about a senior program. And I'm also looking at, um, you know, we got it, we, I want to finish Hayes Street Park, I mean, uh, MLK Park. You know, Hayes Street has got to be paved. Um, it's crumbling up really bad and it's going to crumble away. And we definitely need to get a generator for that building. So those are three big ticket items that I'm looking at. Um, for the ARPA money. Uh, you know, my thing is that the whole thing where ARPA money, we're supposed to touch as many people as we, as we, as we possibly can with this money. Help as many people as we possibly can. I do want to get a clarification because it's said twice about the rebate being brought up in conjunction with, um, the tutoring program. Um, the rebate money is money that every homeowner has paid into the kid. Every homeowner has paid their taxes. This is tax revenue that we've had, that we've had, uh, that they paid into, and we're giving them back some of that money that they paid. That's what that is. That's the difference between that and ARPA. We are not using any ARPA money. We have, we have salaries, I mean, we have, uh, surplus savings in our budget, and that's what's being used. So I don't want to be confused that we're using any ARPA money for the tax rebate. The tax rebate went only to homeowners because the homeowners are the only ones that pay the taxes. Um, there were other programs put in place to help out, um, help out, um, residents through a number of grant programs. Um, again, with the, with the, with the, um, tutoring program, I just, I, I'm not saying I'm against it. I just don't like the way it's being administered because it's only going to help eighty-three students. Um, you know, out of, you know, looking at the census, we got over one thousand, three hundred and thirteen students between ages of five and nineteen. When you factor in college age, it goes up to one thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine. Um, but the way the program is written down, you're not going to help, you're going to help maybe six percent of the people. Eighty-three, eighty-three people, and it isn't fair across the board because, again, the resolution does say you have to go to a local tutoring service, which is Kumon or Mathnasium, and it says they, they would get first preference. So where you think people are going to go? If they want to get their kids tutored, they're going to go to exactly what the resolution say. Ones that would be looked at first, and that's Kumon or Mathnasium. So, um, it isn't about not, it's about not being against it. It's about it being able to touch as many kids as you possibly can. Three thousand dollars is entirely too much. I think you should hit it, knock it down to six hundred, I mean, knock it down to fifteen hundred, that'd give you about five months of tutoring for each kid, or even eighteen hundred for six months of tutoring for each kid. But it's just about the funds, the ARPA money, trying to touch as many people as you can and helping the, the community at, at large versus a small, select, a number of children when their need is so great. I know a lot of children that need tutoring. A lot of kids that need tutoring, and they're not going to be able to afford Kumon, and they're not going to be able to keep their kids in Kumon. And they probably can't even get to Kumon. And then they have somebody, and most, most tutoring is done normally by teachers who are just teaching during the summertime to make extra money. So.
Point of, point of, point of order, Council President, we have already, we've already had a work session.
Uh, 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 Councilman Herring.
Which I have a right to talk about.
Councilman Herring.
Mister, Mister President.
Councilman Herring.
These are the ARPA funds.
Councilmember Herring, I under, let's, first of all, I'm the chair of this meeting. There's a point of order on the floor. I did not hear it. So I'm saying your name so that I can hear the point of order, recognize it, and if it's valid, we, we move on. If, if, I, I don't even know what it was. Um, but there's a point of order. So at a point of order, I'm recognizing a point of order. I didn't know who it was from at first, but now I see that, um, uh, Councilwoman Fareed's mic is open. So, Council Fareed, what is your point of order?
That we have had a work session on this particular resolution already. And for us to spend time now when we need to be focusing on the budget, reworking the piece of legislation that we already had a work session on, where we, these same comments were brought up already, I don't think is the best use of our time.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Fareed. Uh, while I, I will understand that, uh, we have already discussed this, um, on the agenda, um, the budget items for discussion before we get into the budget review is ARPA funds. And I think Mr. Herring is talking about the, uh, administering the ARPA funds. Um, and it's related. Uh, so while I understand your point of order, in the line item for the agenda is a discussion on the ARPA funds, and, and two hundred fifty thousand dollars has been allotted to be used for that. Uh, Mr. Harry?
Yeah, let me break, break, guys. I, I've said what I need to say. I mean, my thing is this. If, if it's a program and you love it and you want to do it, let's do it right. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just saying that it's ARPA funds, and we need to touch as many people as we possibly can. Because, I, like I said, I know kids that were in need, and I understand tutoring helps out a lot. We've always tried to get a tutoring program, and I know my kids over here, ending war two and some of that, and some possible war three, you know? And all over the city, rather, really, all over the city, kids need assistance, and we need to touch as many kids as we possibly can. Again, my thing is, don't, my thing is, don't get upset over, over suggestions. I'm just trying to make a suggestion. I mean, I didn't, you know, sit here and, and get upset because, you know, the doc was stuck with war-three residents who came out and spoke in favor of it. They all have a right to it, and they all spoke highly of it, and they, they, they supported it. But everybody's not going to support it because it's, and people may support it, people may not support it. I'm just saying that ARPA funds got to touch more kids, and have to touch more kids. I was just saying they have to touch more kids. And I think eighty-three is not a good number to, to, to initiate this program. It needs to be reworked and relooked at. And I'm just saying that I also have funds that, um, I would like to see spent on, like I say, MLK playground. That hasn't been financed, you know, again, Hayes Street. I need money for, um, we need a generator on the building, you know? We, I want to do a senior program. I, I would love to do a senior, um, program that allows these Asian place, you know? So, I mean, I'm not knocking it. I'm just saying it needs to be reworked, and I don't think it should be, and it does specialize. And it shouldn't be restricted to Glenn Arden tutoring services, businesses. Because, again, businesses have, have benefited from ARPA funds and relief through the ARPA program and CARES before that. So they all got paid out anyhow when it was closed down. But I'm just saying, you know, ARPA funds, I just need to, I just like to see it touch more, and I just, I don't need to have the program, projects that I'm looking at considered, um, for this budget. And I, I'm going to get you some more numbers. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go to, uh, uh, Councilwoman Fareed, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Guillaume. I'll have a long comment, and then we can move on to the budget review because we do have a, I mean, there's small departments, but we have, um, a lengthy, um, amount of departments to get through. So, Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, I do agree that we need to touch more people, so I actually would be in favor of us increasing the amount of money. From what Mr., um, Stewart said, he said that our spend to date is only one million dollars approximately. So while there may have, uh, there may be programs that are currently in place, there are still unused funds in those programs, and so we should be looking at how we can, um, maybe close out some of those programs. They haven't had, um, the interest that we thought they would have. I mentioned at our last budget work session, you know, I thought the stormwater uh, mitigation one that I, um, have put forward is a great one to, you know, cut back on. Residents have had more than enough time to apply for those. Um, that's also why the programs, um, both for the uniforms and the tutoring have a, a short, uh, application period so that we can determine whether or not we, um, either have funds left that we can spend for something else, or if there are more funds that we, um, need and we can reach more people, we have the opportunity to do that by pulling in additional, um, funds. I am totally in support of suggestions on how to do this. In fact, I sent the legislation to the council prior to introducing it to the public for that exact reason. So I, I just want that to be clear, that there was opportunity for, for that to be worked on and for suggestions to be had before the legislation was put out. Furthermore, this was a topic that we discussed as a council in the last work session, work, budget work session. We agreed on the amount and what we would do. I simply put a resolution together for what we said that we were going to do so that there would be something in writing to support, um, what we had already basically had a, a discussion around doing. Um, I do think that it is amiss, amiss on our part to keep putting information out there that is actually not in the resolution. Again, the resolution does not specify Kumon or Mathnasium, but we keep bringing these up. And I think that there's an undercurrent that is not something we want. Every child in the city of Glen Arden deserves to have an opportunity to the best. And if we have organizations or companies in the city that can offer that for them, I would not want to restrict them from that. The reason why we don't want to do a partial year program is it's, it's because people can't access it. If it's unaffordable for them, then they can't afford it. If we only do five months, then they're not going to get the support for the full year. I would rather help a few and give them the full help that they need than to give partial help and not really be able to see the results. You cannot see results in having tutoring for one or two months. It takes months to get acclimated for the students to get up to speed, in many cases, to even get up to grade level to then be able to experience the true benefits from tutoring and get to that, um, high performing at grade level or above it. So that is why it is for a full nine months, and it's not a partial payment. Because, again, if we're trying to help those in need, if they can't afford it now, they can't afford partial either. So that is why it is done that way. I think if we're going to amend it, we need to look at putting more money towards it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed, and I apologize, Councilwoman Jones. Your hand was behind, uh, a shaded part of my computer, so I will recognize you after Councilwoman Guillaume. Councilwoman Guillaume?
Thank you, Council President. Um, just, I, I'd like to have Mr., um, Treasurer Stewart, who's still here. Um, if we can look at how much money, I know Good Samaritan was a hundred percent expended, but for the community resilience, that was for the small business. How much money do we have left over that was unspent for that particular, um, ARPA grant?
Will you hold one minute for me, please?
Absolutely, absolutely. And Council President, while, while we're waiting on, well, colleagues, I should say, as, as while we're waiting on, on, um, Treasurer Stewart to come back, I do know that for the Intergenerational Poverty Relief Fund, there was over a hundred and seventy thousand-ish that was unspent. So the reason why I'm asking these questions is, given what Councilman Herring mentioned about other projects, I know I have ideas for other projects also, and all the other allocations that have been put forth. I, and Councilwoman Fareed alluded to this, I believe. I, as far as the Intergenerational Poverty Relief Fund is concerned, out of the one hundred and seventy-seven-ish that's left, I would propose, should it be the council's will, that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that unspent ARPA, um, grant go into the pot, if that makes sense? And give, and hearing what Mr. Stewart comes back with as far as community resilience, whatever that difference is, seeing if we can push that back to the pot as well, so there'll be more money for those who still have projects that they'd like to push forth. Um, so that, so that, that's one. The other thing, and I'll probably wait for another conversation, another budget conversation, is how we, we have to be realistic about how we're going to be obligating these dollars because we need to make sure that as we go and put these projects in place for ARPA, that we have contracts or something already set up where by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, we can show the federal government that we didn't just allocate the, these dollars to certain projects, but we actually have spend downs in place. So just want to, um, put that out there. We have until December twenty twenty-six to spend all of it down, but it needs to be committed in some way, shape, or form. So, um, I'll wait for, for, I'm sorry, for, I didn't, I done promoted the man to council member, to, um, City Treasurer Stewart.
Yes, so what we have remaining is sixty thousand, four fifty, um, to date, yes.
Okay, so if I'm, if I'm hearing that correctly, I would propose, if it would be the council's will, to have two hundred thousand total of unexpended, um, ARPA dollars to go back into the pot, if that makes sense. So we, so that gap, that, or that remain, the remaining un, unallocated, or whatever we want to call it, dollars that, that, um, Treasurer Stewart mentioned, will have at least an additional two hundred K so people can have more opportunities to push their projects. Hopefully that makes sense, and the council is okay with that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Guillaume. Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. Just have a question, uh, concerning, uh, uh, if the treasurer, I know you can't give me an accurate answer because this, uh, program, the tax rebate, has been extended until July thirty-first. So how much money approximately is been, uh, spent, uh, in that program? Um. I know it's not ARPA funds that we're using there, but I was just wondering, you know? That's in the budget, and it was one dot five. I'm not sure how much has been spent, but that may be some monies that we can use in other places also.
Yes, um, I may have to come back to you on that because I did walk with that, um, information because that has, um, that wouldn't have anything to do with the budget, so I'm sorry about that. Um, but let me get back to you on it before we finish our meeting, okay?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Uh, in, in relation to that, Mr. Stewart, what is our surplus outside of, what is our true surplus, not including ARPA funds? In the, and that we have in our account?
And so, let, let, let me hold a second. And we are talking about for twenty twenty-four?
No, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking about, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yes.
How much do we have in reserves?
We have, um, if you take out the, the ARPA, we have, um, approximately four point eight million?
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. You have your hand raised. Did you have something to say?
Yes, and this is about the ARPA, um, you know, discussion that we are having. Um, right now, we, I did not include the culmination of the street work that is set to be done. And what I have, um, budgeted for the rest of the year, um, for ARPA, um, was two hundred and ninety-six thousand. Um, on a discussion I had with the acting city manager, with Charles, um, he was saying that some of the work has not, um, been completed as yet. So if you look at last year, we had approximately four hundred and ninety-three thousand in ARPA for, you know, street work, you know, we're talking about, um, paving, milling, and the ADA compliance sidewalks, and sidewalks and gutters. And, um, that I would like to, us to consider while we are, um, on the ARPA side, if we could take more money from that. Um, what really happened is a lot of the funds that we are going to use for the, the, the streets are coming from the state highway user fund. We're going to use approximately seven hundred and twenty-one thousand. But we need approximately, around two hundred and fifty thousand more to complete the street work. So I am, you know, kind of putting that up to say if we could get an additional two hundred and fifty. In the budget right now, I have two ninety-six, but if we could get an additional two hundred and fifty, that would be good to get all the streets taken care of this year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
All right, um, Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, I just wanted to get clarification because I, I, I'm not sure if I got that right. So you're saying that the projects that Councilman Herring has been listing out, like Hayes Street, that he needs, um, that is being covered already by existing funds, but we need to supplement that, that other funding source by two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes, I am saying that we need to at least have, um, something in reserve for that purpose because, really, um, he, he brought a bill to, to me today with regard to streets that they're working on. But I can tell you that state highway user, we have seven hundred thousand there. And when I say seven hundred thousand, I'm looking at five hundred and, um, fourteen thousand. Um, plus we're expects, we're expecting approximately two hundred and six thousand next year. So in total, that's seven hundred and twenty-one thousand. Um, given that, we should be able to manage, but I am a bit, um, I would like us to use more money from ARPA to take care of streets.
Okay, is it possible for us to get pen and paper right now and, and do the math on what we have? You said we had approximately four hundred something thousand dollars of unallocated funds?
Yes.
Is that four hundred something thousand already considering the two hundred and fifty thousand for tutoring and the fifty thousand for uniforms?
Yes, it, it, all of that is covered already.
Okay, so then there's four hundred and, let's just say four hundred and fifty.
Four nineteen, three oh three.
So four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand is left, and then you want to take two hundred and fifty of that four hundred thousand to put it towards the street project. So that should cover all of the streets that Councilman Herring has been talking about. That leaves a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we take that hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus the, I think it's twenty-five thousand dollars for stormwater, take that back as well as the amount that Councilwoman, um, Guillaume said, I think it's a total of two hundred thousand. So that's two hun, two hundred and twenty-five and one fifty, that's three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is now remaining. It's still unallocated.
Right, right, exactly.
Okay, so starting from there, what additional projects are there? Um, and I'm asking this question to Councilman Herring because I know he listed a number of different projects that he wanted to do. So once the streets are taken care of, what else is it that you want to do? And is that three hundred and seventy-five thousand sufficient?
Point of order, Council President, for a second?
Council, Councilwoman Guillaume?
Um, I know Councilwoman Fareed is asking council, is asking a question, but do, does Councilman Herring have to answer this very second, or can the other ones of us who have our hands up respond, um, to something that pertains to ARPA? Obviously, but I just don't know.
Well, I'm sorry. I was just asking him because that, that will finish out my question. I don't, I can't finish out my question if I wasn't sure what
Got it.
Other things, what, what things he needed.
No, got you, because I know I also have stuff, right? And then I also was going to, and, and this also, I'm sorry, Council President, if, I don't even know if this is the right thing. That's why it's a point of order. But I also, uh, in response to what Councilwoman Fareed was doing as far as asking the treasurer some questions, I also wanted to respond to that, so that's why I said.
So, so I'll start my questions. I'll start my questions.
What, one second. So to answer, answer your question, um, uh, Councilwoman Guillaume, just for the order of things. Uh, since she asked Councilman Herring a direct question to help her answer or get clarity on what she was uncertain about, then Councilman Herring does have a right to, you know, to answer her question. Uh, Councilwoman Fareed?
Yeah, I was only asking Councilman Herring because he's the only one that I heard that has said he has additional things he wanted to use ARPA money on. But if there are, if there are other council members that have ideas for using the money, I think that we could just, you know, draw the line on my question and just say there's three hundred and seventy-five thousand, and then start with the, what, you know, what do we spend the three hundred and seventy-five thousand on?
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Fareed.
Okay.
Like, Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President, and I'd like to know from, um, a Mr. Simpson or Mr. Stewart, is, does that include the Church Street project that, uh, needs to be done? And also, um, hmm, no. Lost my train. Yeah, but is, does that in, does this also include the Church Street project, Church, I'm sorry, Church Road project that needs to be done? And are we also, uh, is also the money that's been set aside, is that also the monies for the, uh, council chambers and the, um, nutrition center that, that's also included in what we're doing with the ARPA funds? Thank you.
For the ARPA, for the council chambers and so on, that is in the, um, budget already. So it's already included, all right?
So do we have a good, uh, uh, idea of, of price? Uh, uh, have we received the, uh, proposal?
For the chambers?
Chambers and Nutrition Center, to make sure that we have enough money.
I'll pass it over to Mr. Simpson.
Mr. Simpson?
Uh, good evening. Uh, no, we have not. I have heard from Ms. Felder. She does, she has received the pre-construction hazardous report. I was told that I should have this with, in the next week. Um, so no, it does not include that amount because we do not know that dollar amount. Uh, also, the Church Street project, uh, and I can pull that up, is, uh, estimated at approximately ninety-five thousand, if I'm not mistaken, and I can confirm that number, uh, and the, that is still with the hopes that the with the hopes that the telephone pole will not have to be moved. It does not appear it needs to be moved. However, it is a very distinct possibility that there may be some additional costs associated with that. What that cost would be, I don't exactly know as of yet.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gill?
Thank you, Council President. So you'll you'll kind of see some of these responses, well, what I'm going to say almost response to some of the things that Councilwoman Fareed was touching on. So that's why I did my point of order without knowing, like, can I even do it? So what I want, I believe the only, the only person on this call right now that would really know the conversation that I've been having is is Acting City Manager Simpson because he's been privy to some emails that I've been having back and forth with Mr. Himmler, who is our ARPA grant manager person. So one of the things that I I wanted for us to cautious ourselves right now, and this is more so for Mr. Mr. Stewart, is let's not, and this is nothing bad, but I don't want us to actually leave with this hard line number like three seventy something without knowing like how everything has been spent out and how much we actually have, because I know we're asking him right now in real time. But I believe that, and this is just because of my conversations with Mr. Himmler, that I know this, that there will be, there is a meeting set to take place with, you know, the administration and Mr. Himmler to I to see like what money actually we have left. So I'm just putting this out there that let's miss, let's give the treasurer some grace in case after their meeting, which I believe is on Friday, but I don't want to speak for the administration. I just know what Mr. Himmler shared. What, what, if if that number shifts, either goes up or down, that that unallocated number, let's make sure that we give Mr. Stewart some grace because we are asking him questions in real time. So that's what I was trying to allude to, Councilwoman Fareed, where we were trying to knock all these numbers out. The other question that I wanted to, the other thing, I'm sorry, that I wanted to put out there, this is more in response to Councilwoman Fareed directly. I know she asked, I'm sorry, she asked Councilman Herring, but as for myself, the initial, there there are at least two initiatives that I would like to to move forth. One is a food gift card program for folks who are in need of food. And, you know, they'll they'll be explored later. And the other one was, as we saw, the Intergenerational Poverty Relief Fund could not move as much as it could, particularly for seniors. I realized that a lot of the homes that were aging and and were in in some in bad shape. The seniors were occupants of those homes, but they also were not eligible to get this assistance because of the income requirement where a lot of the funding, I'm sorry, excuse me, a lot of their income comes from their deceased spouses. So they were getting their pensions and that priced them out. So looking for a program to support seniors and but also specifically a food gift card program. So that's, that's, those are the programs specifically that I'm looking for. And there seems to be more than enough dollars that I can use to allocate my program for that, programs for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gill.
You're welcome, Council President. And again, I'm sorry, Mr. Simpson is the only person that knew about this.
No, you're fine.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Council, uh, Council.
The treasurer to pull together at least a spreadsheet so we can see where we actually are with these funds. Because we all over the place with these numbers, so we don't, we haven't settled on an absolute number. See what we actually got left, see what programs we can actually can cut off. And what we actually got left, so see how much money we actually got left because yeah, sometimes we're all over the place with this, and I don't like, I don't like doing business like this. I like to see something in front of me to show me. At least give me a better estimate on what we actually had. Versus, you know, and like I said, like Councilman Gion said, it isn't fair to the treasurer and it's unfair advantage because he's throwing, he's going over things and looking at these numbers all on the fly. And I think we need to get something more concrete. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Herring. I was going to actually say the exact same thing. Mr. Stewart, if you can work on that, that'd be great. Mr. Simpson, as it relates to comment that you had about the quote for the nutrition center, I think we're at a point where this is getting a little bit ridiculous now. We've been waiting on this for quite some time. And so, yeah, either they can perform the services that we need or they can't. And that, that's at least my opinion. So if, I mean, we, there's been multiple extensions on this. Oh, you'll get this soon, you'll get this soon. But, I mean, we would, we'll hope that we do get it this week. And I'd like to commend council members who do have a lot of great ideas that can benefit the city of Glanardin. I know that, you know, all ideas are held with the citizens at at heart. And so, once we have the the numbers in front of us, I would suggest that we come back together in a in a work session to to discuss together so that we can put what's best forward for the citizens. And that we can all be on the same page on one accord. So with that being said, Councilwoman Jones, last word to you, and then we'll get on with the agenda.
Yes, sir. And I would also ask the city manager Simpson that he would request information concerning the elevator project also, because we've been waiting on that. I don't know what the status is. I haven't heard any status, but we need to know what the status of that is also, so we can move forward. And I agree with Council President Curtis, we've been waiting for this information. If this is not the company that can address our needs, then maybe we need to look somewhere else. Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, Councilman Jones, if you could put your hand out so I won't get confused. If you have another one, we'll move on with our agenda. Budget review. Revenue, I'm sorry, yeah. Revenue, Mr. Stewart, does she have something to comment on the revenue?
As, Council President, thank you. As it relates to revenue, unless you have some questions, but what we have here so far is six million five fifty six thousand. Does anyone has any question as it relate to any revenue area? That would be page one on the budget.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yeah, yes, I am trying to share my screen. Do you see, Councilman Herring, can you see this?
Yeah, but it's small.
All right, I'll make it logical. Go ahead, Councilman Herring.
Okay. I just, I just have a couple of questions on some of the revenue that you have on here, starting with personal property tax. Prior year, you had forty thousand dollars. And the two previous years, we didn't get, the house we got was twenty thousand dollars. Makes you think it's going to be forty thousand dollars, and you got zero projected for FY twenty four.
When it relates to prior year, we're looking at those businesses that have not paid their or have not filed their personal property tax. So when we get around to them, I'm personal property tax for prior years. When we get around to them, then is when we apply the taxes for prior year. For current year, yes, we are expecting majority of the businesses to do their filing for their tax, their personal property tax. But this really is for those that I believe may come around and file for their prior year. So it's just a provision hoping that they come in and file. But the amount that is for current is the one that is most significant in this arena.
Well, you have zero.
I could tell you that what we have received so far as it relate to the current year is three hundred and sixty two thousand. So we we are doing a little bit with regard to getting around to the businesses and bringing them up to date.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the prior year. You have a prior year number in here.
Yes, and it's just a provision for those businesses that we catch that is filing for priors that they have not done their assessment.
Okay, then that's a question also. With the real property tax, now I saw your emails about the appeals and all of that. Did you, didn't you say it took that, didn't that take our number down? Is this the number that it should be with the appeals in it?
It's going to take our numbers down. This budget, we we did this before those numbers come in. So I wanted to really speak with the the council about that first. But I believe we will still make this two point eight million. The question I put forward to the council is whether or not we should, you know, push back on this appeal that these companies are requesting because it does not look realistic what they are asking.
Well, some, a lot of them are home artists. I've seen some of those appeals, and I know when I appealed, I actually won. So I'm not sure, you know, if we want to risk that. I mean, I don't, I think it was what, like twenty thousand dollars or something like that, or?
Yes, it's around twenty thousand, yes.
About twenty thousand dollars? Okay. All right. Admission tax, why is admission tax at fifteen thousand dollars? And we've never gotten fifteen thousand dollars in admission tax? Maybe the most you can, four thousand, that's in twenty twenty four.
Well, I could tell you that what we have received so far is six thousand eight hundred dollars. So you know, admission tax has to do with any events that are being kept within the city limits and so on. And and what's happening, I think, since COVID, there has been an uptick. I am, you know, I'm seeing this this amount going up, coming from four thousand or coming from four hundred and thirty dollars the year before to now be at six thousand eight twenty seven is is quite a jump. So I think this amount we should consider.
That amount is basically coming from, I think that amount is coming from the hotel. I think they pay admission tax. Only other thing that we, and most of the time, and only usually it'd come from, maybe you have a theme park or something, but most people don't even collect admission tax. That's the thing with admission tax is that the the person having the event is responsible for filing that paper and saying how much they actually collected. And, you know, they always say they didn't have to collect hardly anything because they don't want pay that admission tax. I don't think we're going to, we've never gotten the fifteen thousand on the on admission tax, because we really don't have events in and and in the city. I don't think it's going to get to fifteen thousand. I think that's, I think that's that's overwishing there.
So do you believe, sorry, do you believe that we should take this down, maybe take our five thousand?
Yeah, I think you should take it down five thousand.
No, 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 take off, take it to ten thousand.
Take it down by five thousand.
Right, right.
Yeah, take it down to ten thousand. I think you should because it's, I don't think we want to make it. Fines for code enforcement? I see you only have four hundred dollars in a budget. And maybe I got, I think that, I don't know if code is on here or not, or that the I know there's been an issue going on. I know codes are, if if enforcement is going to go up more, but I do know there's an issue now. They're trying to enforce commercial vehicles. And there's an issue with what is, what isn't, what isn't. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Mr. Simpson or Mr. Green if they're on the line, what are they, what are they looking at in the way of enforcement when it comes down to that? Because I think that would be the biggest money draw under, yeah, under.
It's on the license and permits.
Good, good, good evening. Good evening, everyone. As it relates to the fines for code enforcement, that number, that number of four hundred dollars was placed there based off of really high grass and weeds and things of that nature. This being my first full year here with the city of Glanardin, I wasn't one hundred percent sure on what things would be like. So I did not want to put a number in there that I didn't know whether it would be realistic or not that we would be able to obtain. And, but Councilman Herring, as it relates to commercial vehicles, yes, we have been enforcing commercial vehicles, but what we're finding is that we would like to ask the council if they wouldn't mind looking at that statute and giving us a definition of what a commercial vehicle actually is. In the code, it just says no commercial vehicles ought to be parked stored within the city of Glanardin. And in general, you have a basic idea of what a commercial vehicle is. But, you know, if we have a definition that's in the code, we think that that would serve a better purpose if this issue have to go to court and we have a definition of what a commercial vehicle actually is per the code. Thank you.
Okay, so, okay, so that's something we need to look into. Because I know there's some confusion out there. Like I said, I was already looking into it, and I have worked the last piece of legislation. So I'm going to try to amend that piece of legislation that I had and bring that, try to bring that with the definitions, and the council can decide what they want to see as a commercial vehicle, or what they don't want to see as a commercial vehicle. Thanks. Now, fingerprinting. You have forty thousand dollars in here for fingerprinting. And forty, and twenty five thousand dollars for live scans, live scan. We are not making that kind of money. Mr. Stewart? Why is these numbers so high? We are not I I just don't see it. I don't see it.
But so we we really are expecting fingerprintings to go up. Right now, we are looking at nineteen thousand three eighty six. Wait, wait a minute. No, no, no. Let me restate. So for fingerprinting, we're looking at seventeen thousand four ninety for as of June. You know, and and please, these are preliminary numbers. I'm still working on them. But here, I'm looking at seventeen thousand four ninety to the year. One thing we must understand, though, is that the live scan, this revenue that you see here is just funds that we are collecting to pay them back. And this is for seizures. So these are monies that will go against what we are actually incurring as an expense. But the fingerprint is our fees. That's what we get paid for, for our administration and our fees. The forty forty thousand here, forty thousand five hundred is a result of us charging an administrative fee for all seizures fingerprinting that will take place in the city. I got news last week that we can charge for the, I think it's MI the MICI that we had said that that is like a a contribution for other police agencies to send their persons to get fingerprinting done, and it usually was not being charged a fee. But after speaking with seizures, they say, yes, we could charge a fee for our administration of that service. So looking at that, I think we could make a little bit more money on fingerprinting.
So we're giving away, I mean, I mean. So we're giving away, I mean, I mean, I knew we could charge the fee, but obviously. You know, some people want to do what they want to do. Um, I still think those numbers are too high. Um. Um. The next time, okay, um, if you go down to. American Rescue Workers.
And, and before you, before you move on, there is one thing that um I'd like to interject and maybe. The chief and um Mister Simpson can assist me with. Um, it's so happened that the live scan machine that is in the office right now. Um, is not working. It, 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 it needs to be replaced. And I think that they have a um, an assessment of around. I think seventeen thousand to bring in a new machine um. To move forward with this um service. So I just want to bring that up so that it's in the pipeline.
So you're just asking to put seventeen thousand dollars in the budget for a new machine?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we need a, a full out discussion on that. I, if council members object to it, then that's something we can discuss, but. I mean.
I personally think we need to look at it because it doesn't seem like we're, we're, we're losing more money than we are. We're just giving the service away. That's basically what I feel. I think it needs to be some discussion on that.
Uh, this Chief Bryant, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, we one of the only um municipalities. Besides Capitol Heights that does fingerprinting for the Prince George's County. Um. And one of the things we experienced, our machine was down for over a month. Uh, we finally got it back up. Um, we got help with our partners from the state. Um. And um the big problem is that we need to update the machine. We, the machine's been down, down quite a few times. Because it needs to be updated. Um, when it's down over a month, going to two months, of course, we're losing revenue. So I think we get a new machine. Uh, we got two quotes so far um from the original uh vendors. They gave us one for thirty, um, but we did find one for seventeen and we're looking for a third quote. So we're gonna need between, I'd say like twenty thousand in the budget just to be safe, um, so we can move forward. Um, if we don't have an updated machine, of course, we can't get the revenue. Um, but we are staple in the county. Um, and well-recognized for our services for fingerprinting, for our citizens and law enforcement. So, um. I'm thankful for that, um, for the city of Glen Arden and um thank you guys for your input. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Alright.
Hey, um, again, I still think we need to look at fingerprinting and see if it's, it's an option for the city. Again, we're not, we're not earning any revenue off of that. We're just giving a service. And we're spending more, we look at everything that's involved with finger, finger, with live scan. Um, we're, we're, we're losing money, we're losing revenue, and it isn't benefiting our citizens. I can guarantee you ninety nine percent of the people that come down here, I guarantee you live outside the city of Glen Arden. Um. So there's other two, two other locations down there that can do it. Um, we're not charging what we're supposed to be charging. So of course, if we're not charging what we're supposed to be charging, there's no need to even have the service in place. Now we found out that you should be charging for the NCIC when they weren't charging, you know, so my thing is it's, it's a bust. It's, it's, we're losing money. On that, and I just think we can do something better with those funds. Um.
So, if I, if I can, Mister Herron, so we can. Um, actually come to a resolution on this and, and not kick the can down the road. Um, I, I don't, I don't, are you proposing something? Because you said we have to come back and talk about it, but I'm, I'm not sure we'll come back and talk about it if we're trying to patch the budget.
I don't think we need to spend seventy, twenty to thirty thousand dollars on a new machine if, if we're not even gonna pay for it. You know, we don't even make that much a year. Looking at these numbers, it isn't worth it. I, I, I mean, it's just a service that we're providing. It's not like we're, we're generating any revenue off of this. What we generate is barely enough to cover, you know, the expenses for the whole, for the whole service from beginning to end. So I just think that we really probably just need to get rid of it now. It was, it was fine when we first had it and we were the only ones. Now the other people are getting it. This, this type, this type of business, so it isn't, it really isn't cost effective.
Well, we have one other, we just have one other agency uh in the area of Capitol Heights. So like I said, it'd be beneficial for us to get an upgraded machine so one, go out of service, so we can service and get the revenue we need. So, but that's, 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 that's my comment on it and I know how beneficial it is. Um, so that's all I have to say on it. Thank you.
Alright. Um. Are there any comments from council members on, on the um? On the adding the, the twenty thousand dollars for the. For the live scan machine? Uh, Councilman Jones, is that, is your hand related to that?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, uh, Council President.
Point of order, Mister President. This is one topic that Councilman Jones should not be speaking on. Because, and you know the situation, why? Because if I say what I say, y'all gonna sit there and say I'm out of order.
Excuse me. Opposition is about the service.
Yeah. One second, hold on. One second, Councilwoman Jones, one second, Councilman Herron. I think Councilwoman. Councilman Herron had a point of order um of Councilman Jones being able to speak on this. I understand what it is you're referring to, Councilman Herron, but we're talking about a machine. We're not talking about any positions. Or anything like that. We're talking about a machine and Councilmember Jones does have a right as it relates to the budget. To speak on the um funds allocated in the budget for equipment. So, Councilman Jones?
Council President. Um. Fingerprinting service in Glen Arden was proposed long ago by some of our forefathers evidently.
Point of order, Mister President. She's not talking about the machine. She's talking about the service, no, which we know.
I understand. I, I don't even, she didn't say anything, Councilman Herron.
She did, she said she's.
She talked, she, she talked about our forefathers.
She, she was talking about the service in the city and why it's here. But my thing is the service is something that her sister does, so why she, she's speaking on this? She's advocating for why.
Does this have anything to do with any relationships that I have with anybody?
Point of order, point of order. One, please don't overtalk each other. Um, or I will have to mute you. Councilman Herron, I understand what you're saying. But she's not talking about her sister. Uh, you didn't even allow her to, to speak. She's talking about her service and she could talk about that. We're not talking about funding uh her sister's position or an evaluation or anything of, of that nature. Miss, Councilman Jones has a right to participate in this discussion in the budget as it relates to the machine. Um, and the overall, the overall service. So if you can, please allow her to speak, that'll be great. Thank you. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Council President. Um, like I said, this service was provided in the, in the, in the charter, in the, and in the budget for many years. Because it was a service that was needed, I guess, in the, in the city. Someone saw the need for this service and the service was provided. Government is not about generating revenue. Government is about breaking even most of the time. Uh, most of the services that we offer, uh, the, the, the police department as a service. Uh, Public Works as a service, none of them generate revenue. So we offer services. There are so many people in the Prince George's County that uh now required to have uh. Uh, fingerprinting done for, to get jobs, to be licensed for uh to, uh, to assist with children. And to do different things. Uh, for them to have to go all the way to Sykesville. To get fingerprinted for these uh positions. I think it does a disservice to the community. This service has been offered to the community for many years and I see no reason why we should not continue it. I, I think that we should put the money in the budget to upgrade the machines that we have to continue to offer this service. So that our people, whether they live in Columbia Heights or Lando or Hidesville, when they come. To get uh fingerprinted, to get nursing positions, to work in uh the health uh fields or to work in teachers' positions. Or for fingerprinting for our police officers all over the county. Like Chief said, there's only two places you can get fingerprinting, the city of Glen Arden and Capitol Heights. Beyond that, you'll have to go to uh Sykesville, which is past Reisterstown in Baltimore. And most fo- folks, if you're trying to get a job, you don't have money to travel that far to be fingerprinted to, in order to apply. And be eligible to receive a job. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Alright, Mister President, may I, since she just lobbied for a specific position, um. Let me just sense the thing. Um. Again, New Carlton does a live scan now, uh, so there's three, three places. And we are not obligated to give any services. I'm just gonna cost our citizens money. And, and thank you, Mister Jones, for, for validating what I said. It's a, it's a losing, you said it, 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 it's a, it's, doesn't break even. The, the service doesn't break even. It's a losing service. It doesn't break even. If it broke even, that'd be something different, but it doesn't break even. And again, lobbying for that position, I think is wrong and. We know, is the issue for that. Let me move on because I say, I think we need to eliminate the position. All of it, eliminate the whole live scan thing, take the salary and dole it out to the police department, the police officers, give them all a job, a bump up, make them more competitive. Um. That's my feeling. Because I feel it's, 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 it's a lot, if you're gonna spend the money that's been there where it's really needed with the officers. Um. Let me go on, um. With this uh revenue. Can I ask Mister um? Stewart, why are we not, have you reached out to the, the Housing Authority to see what the calculation is for the uh? The um Pilot Housing Authority uh program, the pilot program? Because we haven't gotten money from them in a while.
And, and that's true. And that is a project that um Mister Simpson and myself. Uh, will be working on. Um, we were having a discussion on it. Because our previous um city manager and I was going to be working on it, so. That is something that um I'll work with Mister Simpson with. But we are definitely gonna push on that because it's, as you said, it's a revenue that hasn't. You know, I haven't seen on the books since I came there, which is now three.
Yeah, one year we gave them a, we gave them a grace period one year because they were actually in financial trouble. So it's basically the um payment in lieu of taxes. So instead of them paying property taxes, they give us, they pay us the pilot money. And it's usually based on a formula set down by HUD, how much they would actually pay. So I think you wanna get with the um. Executive Director of the Housing Authority, you and Mister Simpson. And talk to them about it and see, because they gotta apply for it and they gotta pay it every year. That's something they should be paying every year to cover the um. The expenses that they have over there. They don't pay property taxes, but they pay us a small percentage uh in that. Um. The next item is, with the American Rescue Plan Act, you have on here seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a proposed budget? Now, when I look on page. And that, maybe I'm, I'm just gonna ask you if this is right. On page. Um.
Six.
Is it? No, that's six. It's on. Oh, oh, here it is. Yeah, on page, yeah, page six. On page six, it has in here Revenue Law City of Glen Arden to General Fund, six fifty. But on here you have on the front, is that, should that be six fifty on the front? Or, or why is it seven fifty? You got six fifty in, in the detail under AWPA. The Revenue Law City of Glen Arden to General Fund?
Yes, um. I think I have to look back at that, yes, because I doubt it has anything to do with the capital because. The Capital Fund is separate from the General Fund. So I'll, I'll have to look into that to see where.
Well.
And what that is.
Yeah, on page six, like I said, it's six fifty. But if you go to page one. That same line under intergovernmental. It says seven fifty.
Right, right.
And that should, shouldn't that be six fifty?
They, they should be saying the same thing.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
Yes.
Okay. So that has to be adjusted. Um. And I just want to know, is this interest number is actually right?
Pardon me?
Forty, forty to sixty two and, and we expect to get forty to sixty two thousand dollars in interest?
And the interest and other income? Yes, so the interest and other income. Now, um, this four sixty eight was as a result of my calculation. Of us still having approximately up to six million dollars to the end of the year. I, I am, I, I was talking to Mister Simpson about this and I'm not so confident of this number anymore. Because we are gonna be spending a lot of money this year. We are gonna be taking out money from the eight million dollars. Um. So we may end up with a little less than this four sixty. We may end up with. Uh, approximately um. Three eighty or something.
So then the, the number needs to come down.
Yeah.
When you say, say eight million, what, what are you referring to?
So right now we have the eight million dollar in the um. The Mer- the Maryland Investment Fund, the pool, and that. I could tell you earned. Approximately three hundred and eighty eight thousand so far. For this year. So based on how I'm managing the use of the resource, uh, the, the funds. I am not sure if I'm gonna make the four hundred and eighty, four hundred and sixty. Maybe I get to four hundred. Um, so I'm saying, let's put it to three eighty.
Okay, so if you can adjust accordingly, that'd be great. Does that eight million include AWPA funds?
It does include the AWPA fund.
Thank you. Councilman Herron?
Um. I, I think that's it for me, um. Yeah, that's it for me with the revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Matt Cross, I see your hand. Did you have a question on revenue, uh, on revenue?
Yes, I have a question and my main question is relative to the new bus that we have. So for that bus, uh, we need to have it painted. And do we have that in the budget? Because it doesn't look like we have it.
Matt Cross, we're, we're on the revenue. Uh, so we have a, a.
Yes, that's correct, so.
That, we will take note of it and we'll, we'll follow back up. You, you're free to, you know. Ask Mister Simpson, um. The actual city manager about that.
Okay, so thank you so much. But then also I do have another question then on that city bus.
So we're, we're on the revenue right now, so we're trying to get through this.
Right, I have a question on revenue.
Okay, go ahead.
Because we also offered this city bus in previous meetings for allowing us to. Use it for events and functions and programs that the citizens may would like to utilize this bus for. And we had mentioned, uh, the city manager and I had had a discussion relative to. Uh, if there were events and programs as we look at our seniors and we're going out on various trips. Like if we want to go somewhere that we could pay into the utilization of the city bus. Uh, for, you know, those types of programs, kind of similar to like what we do for the go room. That could also increase some of the revenue because I know one of the hardest pieces, particularly it has been with our. Um, forever grand travelers with the city of Glen Arden seniors, it has been the transportation. So if we have a city bus, it has an eighteen seat capacity with handicap uh carrying capacities as well. Why not incorporate that as some revenue and make that as an offering, similar to like what we do for our gold room? Uh, because it's a new bus, uh, it does have a functionality to support, you know, uh, trips and. That various conference meetings uh like that as another source of revenue in the city. Thank you.
Are you asking to charge the, the seniors that will be transporting?
So I'm saying that can we expand this call a bus? I see we're looking at, we only made three hundred and forty seven dollars in um twenty three and we only made. Five hundred and ninety dollars in twenty four thus far. So we are projecting to make thirteen hundred and twenty dollars. So my question is, you're projecting to make thirteen hundred and twenty dollars. How are you making more money in twenty five? So I'm asking, are we going to be utilizing this bus for such a reason? Um, because it, we haven't made that much money. Wh- what has given us this increase in the revenue? I mean, we a- almost tripled it.
So, uh, Mr. Stewart. Um, so that's that's fine for us to go back and look at. Again, this is, we're working on a budget, Matt Cross, that you submitted to us, and I appreciate that, uh, the the question. Um, and Mr. Stewart, if you can, I mean, I don't.
Okay, so let me see.
Mr. Stewart, Mr. Stewart. I just. Go ahead, ask him, Mr. Stewart.
Okay, so, um, right now, the bus has made approximately seven hundred and twenty five dollars. Um, this is a bus that has had its problems throughout the year. So it was not utilized, uh, because of the different, um, issues that it has. It didn't run for approximately three months, I think, uh, and that was a lot of revenues lost. But given all of that, the bus has done seven hundred and twenty five dollars for the little time that it ran. So I believe, um, thirteen hundred dollars, um, as we had in the prior year budgets and the budgets before, uh, would be a good projection for us to follow. So, um, if that answer your questions, uh, that I'm happy to give that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Well, not just, it didn't answer it because my concern was.
And again. Matt Cross, Matt Cross. Remember, this is the budget you submitted, like, I I.
This budget's been edited.
Matt Cross. So it was coming upon you to submit a budget. You submitted a budget. This number was in the budget that you submitted. Now, so council, as we're going through it, we're just going through revenues line by line, department line by line, to see if it's an adequate budget for the City of Glennard. We're discussing, see what is too high, what's too low, what we need to take out, what we need to add in. So that is the process of what we're doing now. Um, I appreciate the question, um, and I I personally, I don't see, um, you know, our call of us bringing in just, uh, a truckload of revenue for the city or, uh, even, you know, I I just don't foresee it. So, um, if if there's something that you would like to propose, please talk to Treasurer Stewart, iron out the details of what you would like to see, uh, and then, Mr. Stewart, you know, yeah, or and Matt Cross, you can email the council with with whatever idea that you have. But this point, the 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 budget's now in the hands of the council, and we're gonna move on. All right, Councilman Gion.
No, Council President, thank you. I was, that's what I was going to say. I was going to say I was a little bit confused because I know that this budget was submitted to us by the occupant of the mayor's office and, you know, in conjunction with the. Look up the word, um, in conjunction with.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilman Gion.
Yeah, I was I was saying that I I was just confused because I know that this budget was worked upon with the city manager, the treasurer, and the occupant of the mayor's office, and it was presented to us. So I was just confused as to why this questioning is being done now. While it's great questioning, I would assume that the questioning, the questioning would have taken place before it was presented to the council. That's all I was going to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gion. Matt Cross, please stop. Matt Cross, please don't interrupt again. Uh, you you know the rules of the council. You do not have the leeway to interrupt the council member and interrupt a piece of the meeting. That's, I'm not gonna stand for it. It's already going to be, loo- looks like to be just a very tedious meeting. So, um, if you could refrain from interrupting people, that would be great. I take no pleasure in asking people to have any people removed from the meeting. But if you continue to interrupt it, then I will have to do that. So please do not. Cause I would like for you very much to be a part of any council meeting that we have, as it is your duty to be at this meeting. Thank you. I think I heard someone, uh, Councilman Harry.
Yeah, um, I'm 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 kinda glad the mayor brought that up, um, because I did wanna ask about that. Um, are we, and I'm asking for the city ma- acting city manager. Um, so are we, are we thinking about expanding the hours? Because that's one of the issues that I'm hearing about. The bus is that it it doesn't run, it runs, the hours are too short. You know, it starts running at, I don't know, two o'clock or something like that. So are we thinking about expanding the hours to take that revenue number up? Um, are we thinking about advertising? Cause a- again, a lot of teams like Glennard Hills don't even know the bus is in existence. So are we looking at doing more to get more business and service, more seniors? Is that in, is that being considered in order to reach this thirteen twenty?
Uh, yes, Council President, um, uh, thank you, Mr. Harry. Yes, that is definitely under consideration. The buses currently, uh, we're just getting the A C double checked and the striping and the, uh, the outfitting for the bus is going, should be completed as soon as it comes out of the dealership, uh, for that. And then, yes, uh, I think we would love to be able to expand those hours. Uh, I know a feasibility study was requested, uh, and that's something that we're looking at as well. Uh, but yes, I I think that would be something we are definitely considering. Uh, that number, I think, would be doable relative to that and based upon, and what Mr. Stewart has also shared, um, with the newer bus, we, you know, barring, God forbid, any accidents or any situations, uh, we should have a bus that should be much more reliable on the road. And with the ability to expand those hours, I think, uh, that is definitely possible. Yes, that's your, from the theory, yes, it is being considered.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from council on revenues before I move on to the next item in the budget? Okay, uh, police grant budget. There any comments from council, how do you like to do the police grant?
Um, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry.
Um, shouldn't we really be napping together all the money for the building? Not really, should this be like a building project? Um, a separate department? Cause we got, we we put in, what, a million dollars? Well, you, you know, we put in a million dollars of our own money. And we got one point two million dollars here, four hundred thousand dollars here. I think we should have all the money that goes toward the police facility in one place, so that we know exactly what number we have and what we're working with. And because this is like separated, I think that should be, that should be a separate line item, because it's gonna be a major project that we really gonna have to track. And we will have to report out to the state for both of those bond bill numbers. All right, thank you.
I agree. Can we track this separately, council? Uh, council, I'm promoting people to, or electing people. Um, Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Could you proceed accordingly, please? Thank you.
Yes, um, we we could track it separately, although it's a capital item. I could set up a special fund to show exactly how we move from, you know, you, the whole cost of it and then transfer it over to capital when it's done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes.
Any questions or comments on the P E G grant budget?
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, um.
What's my hair? What page is that?
Uh, seven.
Share it, go ahead.
Um, so we're only spending twenty five thousand dollars on cable and video equipment? Mister.
Yes, so, um, our media specialist i- is saying that, um, they believe that there is one item or a couple of, um, equipment that needs to be upgraded. And they're expecting to spend approximately twenty five thousand dollars on that. So that has been said, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure, whatever we need to get in there, we need to get while we got the money in the account, if we're gonna, you know. I just wanna make sure twenty five thousand dollars was enough. All right, thank you, that's it.
Dude. Uh, any question or comments, uh, about? I do have one. Camera photo enforcement budget. Mr. Stewart, oh, that's right here. Any questions, anybody still there? I do have one. What are, can I, can I go for you?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just have, uh, what are the cameras gonna be in place? We've been waiting on this for a while, too. Chief or Mr. Simpson?
Yeah, Chief Brian, um, they had to get approval from this, um, from the county and the state. I signed off on the letter from the state. I I forwarded the letter to the county, um, about two months ago. And I signed off on the one for the state about two weeks ago. So, um, spoke with, uh, Mr. Lanier from from the company, um, and he said, uh, hopefully, we should be up and running, um, with sign signage, um, by the second week in August.
And and have we decided on on placement?
Yes, um, uh, from the survey and stuff, as far as placement and stuff, um.
But you know what? We can talk about that later. I just wanted to put the button. Yeah, that'd be, that's another topic, and I don't wanna prolong this meeting with with that. So, but I appreciate that the, um, that is actually moving forward. Mr. Councilman Harry?
Um, I'm good. I don't have any other questions. I'm good on that. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, the Glennard Farmers Market Budget. Any questions on that? Comments? Here now, we'll move on to the Gold Room Budget. Questions? Comments?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilmember Harry?
Um, that budget. Oh, the budget is completely in violation of the charter. You cannot have a deficit budget. They have to cut something out of that budget to get rid of that nine thousand sixty seven dollars. Um, you, we, we can't do deficit budgets. Charter doesn't allow it. Have to have a, uh, zero balance or surplus, one of the two, but it can't be a deficit. Especially since it's enterprise zone. So something gotta be cutting that budget. To two and ten dollars. And I'm thinking you may have to cut out that, uh, equipment rental.
Could I, could I get it here? Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So, um, Mr. Simpson, I spoke with the coordinator for the, um, for the, the go room. And yes, the equipment, we are taking out. Uh, not only that, but we are reducing some other expenses and taking out another. So for temporary employment, we are removing that three thousand that's there. And for repairs and maintenance, we are bringing that down to thirty eight hundred dollars. So we'll be, um, saving approximately eighteen thousand dollars there. Um, but apart from that, we were considering, um, I think they wanted to have better flooring. They wanted to do some work on the floor. I don't know how much that would cost. But that was, uh, an, um, idea that was floated to us. So right now, we're we're at eight thousand nine hundred and thirty three after we have done those adjustments. So it will be the ten thousand dollars for the equipment, three thousand dollars for temporary employment, and a reduction of five thousand for repairs and maintenance.
Okay, um, one other question. At some point, do we gotta put back in this budget, uh, transfer to the City of Linnart? Because it used to be a transfer in here of like twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars to the city to cover overhead, because they owe that money to the city for like gas, electricity, and other utilities. Um, and at some point, that's gonna have to go back in this budget, because the goal room, it needs to pay for itself. And that's one expense in that's not in here, is that the utilities that are covered by the City of Linnart. So, uh, we we used to be sixty thousand dollars when we were making money, then we took it down to twenty thousand dollars. Then when COVID and hit and they closed it down, we just took it out all the way, cause it wasn't, the go- goal room wasn't running. Banana is back in the running. We need to really put that back in here. And there's normally a transfer from the, uh, goal room to the, uh, general.
Yes.
Over here. So we need really to look at doing that. All right, uh, that's it for me on that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Councilman Harry. Uh, next up is legal. Any questions or comments, uh, on the legal department? Okay, here now, we'll go to general operations. Any questions or comments on general operations? Okay. Here now, we'll go to move forward. I'm sorry, uh, so.
Can't wait that easy.
Not not, that's, I I know, but I, I missed the Councilwoman Jones' hand first, so I'm gonna go to Councilwoman Jones, then I'll come to you. Councilwoman Jones?
Hey, Council President, I just had a question concerning, um, uh, the, um, the contract for the city trash. Is that up this year or is it next? Do we have, uh, one more year on that?
Simpson?
Uh, yes, uh, our plan is to submit a R F P for the city trash, because it is up this year.
All right, thank you.
Excuseful, pardon me. Um, uh, Councilwoman, uh, cap, sorry, Councilman Harry?
Yeah, um, I just wanna confirm, um, uh, Mr. Stewart, with the I O F expense, that's, that number's a good number, cause a lot of times they would do a recalculation. We not hit, we not do for a recalculation of that, uh, we, where it could go up.
Yeah, they're always doing that. Uh, right now, um, our bill is ninety six thousand dollars. That's what they sent to me as far as last week. Um, but they always do that audit, and sometime it goes up like twenty five, thirty thousand dollars. And I think that one thirty six thousand is adequate right now, just to make sure that we cover all of that, um, the audit costs that they always come back with.
Right, right.
Yes.
Um, and with utilities under electric, uh, B G and E?
Yes.
You took that up to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars? What is the projected for this year?
Okay, so what what we have spent so far, let me see, hold on a second. So far for electricity, we are actually at one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And why is, um, why is, um, let me see, uh, what was that? Um, I think I might. What is this, um, bonus base merit merit? Bonus suspense seventeen thousand five hundred? What is that for?
Yes, so that is for those people who have done, um, you know, exceptional work throughout the year. Um, we would like to give them a bonus for their, um, you know, unselfish efforts to ensure that the city is run, um, not only based on their position, but they actually step up when. Um, not only based on their position, but they actually step up when called to do additional stuff.
Well, what criteria are you gonna use to judge who gets what?
It is definitely, it, it is definitely based on their, um, their valuation that is currently being done.
Uh, okay, hmm. And you're expecting, um an A D P? Let me ask a question with the A D P system, the payroll system, the expenses for that? Are we gonna move some, at some point, like everybody else in the United States and go completely online? We're still using a time clock.
Yes, we are, we are actually moving forward. As a matter of fact, right now, the police officers actually can clock in using their phones. Um, so we are moving forward where that is concerned.
What, over for the entire uh staff?
Uh, we'll get there, but for now, we're working with the police department to have their clocking be done um on their phones. And they could actually look at um their personal um information just by registering on, on, um, on A D P.
Well, it seems like everybody should be doing that. So, I mean, it'd be easier, um, and all that time clock stuff. I haven't seen anybody hit a time clock since I've, since I've worked in nineteen eighty three. At a part-time job.
Um, the thing is, um, they have to be within certain, um feet within, within the biz, within the office. Um, so it could be um passed on to the staff, but yes, we will still keep a clock for those who may forget to, to clock in, all right?
Well, I just don't understand why they just don't have online system, um, you know, just straight online. I mean, everybody I know uses online. A D P is a very good online system. Um, and they just log in online. And my thing is, I mean, if somebody login and then, and they're not in the building, I mean, I hope somebody would notice that. And then they shouldn't be getting paid, but I mean, then they'd be fired because they logged in and didn't come to work, but, um.
You, you have to be close, you have to be close to the building in order to clock in. And right now, the, the officers are exercising that. They have to be within certain parameters of the building in order to clock in. They just can't roll out a bit and clock in.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, that's what everybody else does, because you know, everybody work from home now. So you just go online, log into your A D P and you can clock in and clock out. Um. All right, um.
If I can interject on that point, if that's the si- system that we're getting, I don't agree with it. Like, that, that just doesn't make any sense. Like, the system should work for us. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman.
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, I agree with you. I agree with you.
It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to have a system where they have to be in a certain proximity towards to the building to clock in. That's just, that's not even come on now.
Can I uh respond to that?
Sure.
Um, if you're at work, you're at work. If you're at home, you're at home. Um, you're expected to be in the office to start working. Um, well, you can't be on the street somewhere and uh clocking on your phone.
And, and I, I wanna interject. So if an officer is coming into work and there's an emergency and he stops by that emergency first before coming uh to the building, then he, he can't, he can't clock in. I mean, i- if, um if, for example, I, I went to the site of the Seventh Street Park um, where I, Councilwoman Fareed and Councilman Harren was, you know, working with the engineer. Um, and let's say that I saw Jordan there and he wanted to start off coming there first to meet the engineer to go over something. Uh, we just gotta be flexible. I think, I think all of our systems are, not all of us, I take that back. We have to do a better job of analyzing the systems that we have and making them more efficient so the the government operations could be more efficient. We're still stuck in the past and we keep on saying that we're gonna upgrade something. It's like we're, you know you know, slow walking is this thing of becoming more efficient, well, we just need to be better stewards of what we have. Um, and be more strategic and implement some, uh, some policies, some processes and some systems that can help move things along a lot faster in the city. We're, we're, we're completely outdated with how we do things. And we have some very bright people, we have some very bright people on board. Um, and I think the expectation is that the, the bright people will actually imple- implement some things that can actually help. And I think you guys have done a good job thus far. Um, I, I think we just need to continue in that, in that, in that vein, so.
So, Mr. Curtis, so the scenario that you, um.
And Mr. Stewart? Respectfully, I'm, that was just a comment. We don't have to get into the back and forth of it. Um, I would just, that's just a comment. And I interrupted Mr. Harren, so I don't wanna take up anymore of his time. And, and that's all due respect, Mr. Stewart. I'm not trying to, you know that, it's, it's not bad. It's just that, it was just a comment and I already took out Mr. Harren's time, so I wanna go back to him.
Okay, oh, oh, thank you, Mr. I mean, you had, you asked a lot of the questions that I was gonna ask anyway, but I, I just, I do think, again, like you were saying, I mean they should be able to look up their time. They should be able to look, they should pull the W twos like everybody else. They should be able to see what their league balance is. All of that, and I don't know if they can do all of that now or not, but um, it doesn't seem like it with this finger, with this thumb thing and everything else they're doing, so. Um, I think that needs to be looked into. Um, one other thing, um, so and we, and we, and we're these, these amounts for legit are good. They're not going up. Did you take them up any? Legit, yeah, all of legit for police, public officers and liability insurance?
Yes, so those almost are the actual numbers that they will be charging for twenty twenty five. They have actually billed us or given us a pre, um, a pre invoice. So these numbers are what they're charging us.
Right. Okay. All right, one other thing. Think this. Were we doing, were we doing a website redesign? See, I see fifty eight hundred for a website redesign.
Uh, that, that's just the description. I think I may have to take that off. That's the annual fees. Uh, for operating the website. So the redesign, yes, I may have to take that off.
Are we gonna redo, do a redesign? I think we need to. I think, I don't know. That, that's something off the other website. I mean we've had it, but I think it needs to be modernized or something. It just, to me, it doesn't use a front. Um, but anyway. Okay, um. I think that's it. That's it for me with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. And just circling back, I mean, if we don't have employees that could trust to, to properly clock, I mean, track their time, then that's another statement, so. Um. Uh, nowadays, for example, um, if there's a snow day, people should still be able to to work. If I have internet, I can, I can still perform my duties. There's nothing to stop me from doing it because I have internet, I have my computer. So while most people these days are working from home, those individuals won't be in proximity of the, the building to be able to clock in. So I just, that's just, all right, I'm getting off my soapbox now, but I just ask you guys to, to, to think about it and especially as we're, if the council is going to come together to figure out how the rest of this op money is spent. Um, and if there are some things, some systems that can help, um make operations more efficient to get these things off the ground, then that's something else that we should be looking to us. And we should be discussing as well at that meeting, so with the, it can be all inclusive. And how we um spend these funds and get things implemented in the city to help our citizens, so. With that, I'll move on to a little more town center budget. Are there any questions or comments related to that? All right, the Veterans Memorial Budget.
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Harry?
Yeah, we will not be doing papers, uh this year. I mean, in twenty twenty five, we just did them in twenty twenty four, so we, we try to do them every two to four years. Um. Now, I would like to have that seventy one hundred move down to, uh the Veteran Memorial Maintenance, make that sixteen three. So that we have enough, make enough for the maintenance for the year. And I think it needs some, um, a little maintenance on actual memorial with some clocking and other things. Um, that need to be done. So I'd like to move that money down there and take it out of the papers and move it down to the uh maintenance.
Yeah, noted, noted.
I was gonna ask you, how much, do you know how much we spent altogether in twenty twenty four for maintenance? I wanna think it was somewhere around, what? Thirteen, was it? I don't know.
No, I'll have to come back to you with that number. I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. So I think, I think we should be good with the sixteen to cover the maintenance for uh the memorial. And what other, other upkeep we gotta get done?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh, that was the final item on the budget review. Um, so, Mr. Stewart, with all the notes that we've taken, uh, that you've taken tonight. Could you, uh, please, um, make the necessary adjustments and, um then, uh, what's a turnaround to have the budget back in our hands?
I, I, I will try to have it as early as, um maybe tomorrow night or Thursday, because it would be good for us to have a last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
To finish up on this, and it would be good if we could do it this week if possible. I don't know how, you know, um, if the availability of everyone, but I really want to get this done. And, um, it's just a few items we have here to get resolved.
Okay, I'll take a poll from the council on availability this week. There's only one other thing, council members. Um, uh, the the cameras, Mr. Stewart, uh, Mr. Simpson, um uh, the camera, security cameras for the building, the upgrades for those. Um, uh, it's my understanding that the police department has, uh, put out a RFP for this. They have three bids for uh, well, have three bids. I'm gonna put a RFP, but have three bids um, to implement a, a new security system. And the request has been, uh, made to add, uh, I believe it was forty thousand dollars in the budget. Um, for this effort. Uh, so just bringing that to the council's attention as well. Um. With that being said, I know the council is expected to go in a closed session to discuss, uh, personnel. Mr. Simpson, did you have anything else?
Nothing.
Mr. Stewart?
Um, that would be it for now.
Uh, and Mr. Stewart, a- again, there, there's nothing directed towards you, so I don't want you to think that any of my comments were towards you, it was just in general.
Uh, I, I understand, but these are exceptional items, okay?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
And you guys are an exceptional staff, so. All right, so with that being said, um, the council is expected to go in a closed session. So to an annotated code of Maryland State Government Article Section ten dash five oh eight A, the council by majority vote. They're tied to executive a closed session at any time during the meeting. Should the council retire to executive closed session, the chair will announce the reason and report be issued at a future meeting discussing uh, the reasons for such closed session. And, uh, as mentioned, in this closed session, we'll be discussing, um, personnel. Uh, and, yeah, personnel. Uh, and I'll also do a consensus of scheduling of, um availability. Um, so with that being said, is there a motion? I'm sorry, let me make sure I have this right. Yeah. A motion to adjourn to closed session. I will second it. Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, could you do a, a voice vote, please?
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Haring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robin Jones?
Yes.
Council Vice President Angela?
Yes.
Council President Curtis?
Yes.
You have a unanimous vote to go into closed session.
Thank you. With that, the open portion of this meeting is closed. Thank you very much, um, Mr.